This is Billings is a local show featuring the people, places and things that make the magic city our home. Brought to you by Town Square Media Billings. Special guest here in the studio today, talking with Billings Councilwoman Penny Ronnie. Penny, nice to finally meet you in person. I've been a long-term, a long time follower of your Facebook page and what you do in Billings and it's nice to finally meet face to face. Welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And right back at you.
Yeah, I know you're a Billings, uh, Billings native. You've been, you pretty much grew up here your entire life. You have a big passion for Billings.
Most of my life.
Most of your life. Uh, you do have a huge love for Billings and our community and it shows, uh, how, uh, how you interact with that in the city council. It seems like a lot of times Billings is, is a good old boys' club. It seems like maybe that's changing a little bit. Is that perception still sort of true in your opinion? Or is it, is it getting a little more progressive, uh, in the last few years? And if you don't want to answer, that's fine.
That's a loaded question.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
But I'm not shy, you know, I don't, I don't turn away from those kinds of questions. I, uh, I think it's a combination of all that you described.
Sure.
We're still a good old boys' club here. You know, we still are. Uh, we still have a ways to go in regard to, um, equality with females and persons of color at tables of decision-making and leadership and, and the real kind of power seats.
Sure.
Um, that are making decisions for the, the, all of our community. Uh, we still have a ways to go with that.
Yeah.
Um, but, but Billings is a lot further ahead in regard to some of the issues that some people might consider social or environmental.
Sure.
Or issues that may be considered politically more leaning to the left, uh, especially environmentally. I mean, Billings leads, leads our state in what we have been able to do, to move our community ahead in regard to how we're building, um, environmentally friendly buildings, buildings that are more energy efficient.
A little more sustainable, yeah.
More cost-effective, more sustainable. Exactly. I'm so proud of the work that we do at the city level. You know, Billings as a city government, uh, we are, we are extraordinarily, um, ahead of the game from a lot of other communities throughout the country.
That's nice to see, isn't it?
Not just even in Montana, throughout the country.
Nice. Take that Missoula. Take that Bozeman.
Exactly. I know. They always think that, they always think they're ahead of us. But the reality is that Billings is, we just don't know how to toot our own horn.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know how to really, um, identify with the fact that, that when we are leading the economy in Montana, we are the largest city. We do lead in a lot of ways within our state that are, are, um, very, uh, I, I, I tend not to use the word progressive because I think people automatically put that into a political concept. Um, and that's never the way I mean it to be. Uh, but when you take a look at what we're doing with our landfill, um, you know, Dave Mumford, who was a, uh, director for Public Works for many, many years.
Sure.
What an, an amazing visionary. You know, our, our city directors, um, from, for all the different departments are, are so ahead of the game, uh, in regard to the areas of expertise that they bring to our city.
Nice.
Uh, they're visionary. You know, Dave Mumford was one of many.
Yeah.
Um, but what he's been able to do in our public works department, which is completely take it off the tax roll, you know, in regard to, um, uh, city taxes, property taxes, don't pay for public works. You know, public works is now a, it's now an enterprise fund, which means it's all service-based. Um, it's not tax-based.
Sure. So it pays for itself, basically.
It pays for itself.
And maybe even makes a couple bucks ideally.
Exactly. And we do, off the methane that, that Dave was able to really conceptualize and say, hey, this is what we can do in our landfill. And anyone who would go tour the landfill, I think would be just as, as proud of our community as I am, because it doesn't look like a dump.
Right.
You know, it's, it's really nice. And we've got the transfer station in there now. So, so nothing is dumped outside. Everything is self-contained and dumped into, within a building.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, we tend to have some of that Livingston wind that manages to find us.
Sure, yeah.
So hopefully this will help contain all of the plastic bags and things like that, that, that don't get into other plastic bags and fly all around. And hopefully that will help self-contain that. But, but we are, you know, we are so far ahead of the game in Billings and really, really proud of our city government.
We should be proud of it, yeah.
Absolutely.
One thing that you were pretty involved with, and this seems like a nice victory for Billings is, uh, the massage parlor issue, which, you know, I've, I've wondered for years. I mean, it is obvious what they are. It's obvious what happens there. And I've always wondered, how does this go on right under, right under the authorities' noses with, I mean, I just, it just kind of boggled my mind. And so, tell me if you have a minute, just kind of talk about the steps that you've made with that. I noticed a couple of them are closed or have, have moved or out of business. Um, is that also a whack-a-mole situation? Or do you think Billings is getting closer to eradicating basically, uh, basically prostitution in, in Billings?
Um, so, wow, that's once again really loaded.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, but it's a question that a lot of people wonder. They're like, how do they operate? How does, how do they get away with it? And then, and I guess, and congratulations on making steps to, to get that cleaned up. I mean.
Yeah, thank you. That was a long process.
It was, huh?
That, that, uh, that initiative was almost four years in the making.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I like to say it's even longer than that because we've been working on this, this issue longer than that. But yeah, from 40-plus years, Billings has just turned a blind eye to our illicit massage industry.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, you used the word prostitution, but what I would say to you is that it's not prostitution, it is human trafficking.
Sure, yeah.
So, and there is a difference. You know, prostitution is consensual.
Yeah.
Um, human trafficking is not. And, uh, while some, um, I would say some ill-informed people who like to call the, the victim workers, sex workers, um, sex implies the term consent.
Right, yeah.
These women really are victim workers.
Yeah.
Uh, they have very little choice within their, um, their own familial structural. Uh, most of these workers, the victim workers that come through Billings are tied to Chinese organized crime. And they're just moved, um, you know, from.
They shuffle them around, city to city.
They shuffle them around. Yes, they're shuffled around.
And unlike, unlike an exotic dancer that may have the same, the same type of lifestyle, traveling club to club around the nation, this is absolutely not, not the same scenario with, with the massage parlors.
Correct, yeah. These women, the victim workers in the, in the illicit massage industry are, um, consumed and overwhelmed with debt that has been put on them very unfairly.
Sure.
Uh, the majority of women speak very little English because they're, they've come over to the United States for various reasons, from South Korea, Thailand, Vietnam, China.
Sure.
Uh, typically what we see in, in Billings are women from South Korea, but, but they're tied to Chinese organized crime.
Gotcha.
Uh, um, you know, it's interesting.
And they probably don't have driver's license. They don't, even if they were to escape, no ID, no license, no paper. I mean, what are your options at that point?
But all, but also what people, what, what it makes it, what makes it difficult for people to understand in regard to the human trafficking issue with the illicit massage industry is that these women do come and go. Um, so for example, they'll fly here on their own. They'll take a bus out of here on their own. They'll come here on a bus on their own. But within the culture in which they were raised, in the culture in which they live, um, they, they don't need force to keep them tied to the trafficker of which this trafficker has said, has said to them, you owe me because I paid for your way to the United States. I paid for your housing to get here. I paid for so many services.
And the debt's probably impossible to work off, right?
They never get off or away from that debt. Not only, not only does the, the trafficker say, you owe me because of all of those reasons I just listed, but now they're working within the IMI illicit massage industry system. They have to pay for the shampoo they use. They have to pay for the food they eat. They have to pay, if they're supplied with a bed because they stay right on premises, they don't stay someplace else. They stay right on premises. They have to play, pay for that bed. They have to pay for every single thing. And it'll be $10 for that tube of toothpaste. It'll be $10 for that toothpaste. They can never get out of the debt. And what holds them there is shame.
I suppose, yeah.
In that culture, they don't need beatings. They don't need, you know, physical chains. They don't need anything like that. The trafficker holds them there out of shame.
Yeah.
It's shameful now what the women are having to do to survive.
Sure.
And so they're held there through cultural shame.
Yeah.
And the majority of, of the victim workers that, that, that we work with, their families do not know what they do. Or, or if their families do know what they do, um, oftentimes it may be a husband that, that originally began trafficking them because he was an American GI over in South Korea, sees her at a juicy bar, you know, maybe wants to rescue her out of the juicy bar. But really what he wants is just to bring some woman back here to be his milk cow, you know? And then he starts trafficking her.
Sure.
And, and then she, she's got to earn money for both her husband and she's got to earn money for the trafficker. And, or it's a domestic violence situation which she's, she's escaped from, but she became instantly vulnerable to predators within her own culture. And these women cannot get out of it.
So what in, in Billings now, where is it standing now? Is, have they, have they all been pretty much shut down? Or?
No. So, uh, so the ordinance passed, um, April 26th, and then it became effective June 26th.
Okay, just so recently, yeah.
So, yeah, so it was just recently. It's been about two weeks. Uh, and, and we literally just, um, just came out of two really intense days of training with a nonprofit organization called Collective Liberty. And they're out of Washington DC and Texas and just an outstanding organization that has done, uh, real groundbreaking work in the illicit massage industry within the United States. So we had, um, city staff that are all involved in some way, shape or form with the enforcement of the illicit massage, I'm sorry, the massage and spa facility ordinance licensing. Uh, and then we had Montana DOJ, um, which is the state agents, Montana Department of Justice agents, um, and then FBI, uh, and I attended the training as well. So the departments we had there as a city were city legal, city finance, um, city code enforcement. Oh, we also had the county code enforcement officer, uh, city planning, um, I think, I, I think I cover, oh, and fire. Uh, and so we were all together in a two-day training session. And, um, first day, really intense lecture, uh, where people were just like, oh my God, really? You know, learning what really happens within, within this illicit massage industry. And, and what's important to remember and know is that the illicit massage industry is the same, it's the same exact business model in Billings, Montana, as it is in Oklahoma City or New York City or Atlanta, Georgia.
It's like a franchise, or it's exactly.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah.
It does not change. That business model is the same because it is, it is Chinese organized crime.
Sure.
Um, it's also Korean organized crime, but we're seeing the Koreans move in a bit of a different way and what in, in the way they're working. And it's really becoming a stronghold of Chinese organized crime. And the money just funnels right back to China.
Sure.
So, so the first day of our training, Wednesday, was, was lecture, very intense, um, very eye-opening for many people in the room. Then yesterday was hands-on. So we learned how to do the investigative process.
Sure.
And I'll share with you, because I think this will be interesting for your listeners, especially those that may have called in yesterday to a certain number. Um, so, so yesterday, the detective Joe Scaramucci out of Waco, Texas, he showed us and went through the process so we could all see and identify. And so all the city staff members could see and identify how it works for a buyer to connect with a victim worker.
Gotcha.
So he created a fake ad.
Yeah.
And one fake ad, one, just one.
Yeah.
A fake ad. It was put on a website hosted in Europe.
Yeah.
The only thing this website does is post ads that are selling human beings for sex all over the country. It's the only thing that website does. That website posts nothing else. That's it. That's all.
There's no used cars. There's no old tires for sale.
Exactly. That's it. That's all. That's the only thing this does.
Yeah.
He posted one ad and then he had the, um, one fake ad and he had the, a burner number, burner cellphone number attached to that ad. At about 10 o'clock in the morning, while we're all watching this monitor, he hits publish. The ad goes live on that website in Europe.
But was advertising for, in Billings, right?
In Billings, exactly. It was advertising for massages.
Services and billings, yeah.
Exactly. For a massage in Billings. Within 10 minutes, his phone was ringing non-stop.
That blows your mind. That's just my, it just shatters your brain, doesn't it?
Within 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And so, um, and the first number to come in, I'll just share with you, was, we're, you know, we're watching the numbers come in and light up on the monitor. First number that came in was a 202 number. So we were like, hmm, Washington DC, hmm.
Yeah.
So we learned how to take that number, how to trace that number to see who, who's attached to that phone number. We learned how to do that. Um, and it was attached to a guy in my ward, Ward Four, who lives on Rim Rock Road.
So was he using a service to spoof a number then? Or did it happen?
No, no, it's probably his cellphone number based out of Washington DC. You know, it probably is. But we're watching all of these numbers come up. And, and I think what was really shocking for the people in the room is that they were recognizing some of the numbers. And then the names of the men.
Right.
That were coming up, they were recognizing the names. And what was so, I mean, the whole thing was disturbing. But what was really disturbing as well, in the illicit massage industry, there are acronyms and letters that stand for certain sexual acts. These men calling in, that were calling in left and right, knew all those acronyms.
So it's not like it's their first time. It's not the first time looking for illicit massages.
Oh, I was calling for a massage!
Because they got a real sore back from that car wreck.
Gee, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I was calling for a massage. Gee, you knew what BB, you knew what BJ, you knew what all of these other letters meant because that's what you were requesting, you know?
That's crazy. So do you know, how many, how many total phone calls did you get during that demonstration? Was it in the dozens or?
Oh, we were, oh yeah, it was, we were still hearing when our training ended, um, at five. So I was still with them like around five. His phone was still going off. All day long, we were hearing his phone ding.
Wow.
And, um, uh, yeah, it was, it, it was shocking, appalling. It not, you know, I wasn't surprised by any of it because it's so often the world I live in. But, uh, for the room, it really hit home to them just how, um, how disturbing this is that it's been happening in our community. The other thing we learned too, was how to, how to investigate the trail. Um, and I'm not going to say it publicly.
Sure.
But how to investigate the trail to see where the money is going to and how many of the businesses within, within our city limits, how many of these illicit massage businesses are tied to restaurants throughout the country where they laundered the money then through? Um, how many are tied to nail salons? How many are tied to legitimate businesses?
Right.
Casinos?
Yeah.
Um, how many are tied to legitimate businesses? And we got to learn how to trace that, that money through all open source material, um, you know, open source websites and things like that.
Sure.
Um, all the way. And we'd, we'd trace the money all the way to China.
Is that right? That's, that's so interesting. And that's crazy. Is that, does, does tracking where the money goes, does that help with prosecution then? Is that like for, is all right, so you know what's going on and you know this is happening, but where, where does the, where does the arm of the law come in and be able to prosecute and shut these things down? I mean, is that, is it for the money laundering charges? Or how do you, how do you catch these bad guys, I guess, is?
Right, absolutely.
What does the city deal with?
And it, uh, outstanding question. Uh, at the local level, it's going to be pretty tough to do money laundering because that's going to bounce up to their, it's probably going to bounce up to federal, exactly. Um, like everything else that, that we've been talking about before we even started the podcast, but, um, our resources in regard to public safety, so that's going to be our court system, our, um, law enforcement systems.
Sure.
We are so limited in the state of Montana.
Yeah.
We do not have the best laws at the federal level. We don't have the best laws at the state level. And we're working to get them improved at the county and, and the local levels. We need to improve all of those laws. And just from my personal opinion, um, the federal level is, is where we need to really be addressing this because
Yeah.
The reality is that all of these businesses are tied, um, throughout the country. They're tied together. They're networked together with different families.
Sure.
And, and it are, they're all tied to crime bosses in China. And so we're, we're sending billions, not millions, we're sending billions and billions of dollars based on the violence against female bodies.
Yeah.
To these boss families in China.
Yeah.
And so this really needs to be addressed to really attack the system that has overtaken our entire country, not just Billings, but our entire country, um, with this organized crime. Uh, you know, this really needs to be addressed at the federal level.
Yeah.
What, what is happening throughout the country is we're, we're addressing it at the local levels because, um, like what we heard in 2019 at the Montana State Legislature, when we were attempting to address it for, for the entirety of the state.
Yeah.
We kept being told by rural legislators, this is a Billings problem, you know, just go deal with it in Billings. We're not going to deal with that at the state. We don't have trafficking throughout the state. This is just a Billings problem.
A lot of Montanas think, oh, it's not happening here. And it's happening, and maybe not in your little town in, you know, Forsyth or whatever, but.
It is.
I, I think it is. It's happening in almost every community across the state.
It is happening in rural America, in, in, in big numbers for, for that population. You know, what we know just for Billings, and, and you look at the population of Montana. So if we're seeing something in Billings like what we're seeing, what we know per capita in Billings with the illicit massage industry, we have more illicit massage businesses in Billings, Montana than New York City does in New York City.
That's crazy.
So, and who we know the buyers are, the buyers are not just Billings guys.
Sure.
The buyers are coming from Columbus, from small community towns. That, that, the effects of that violence is going right back to those small communities.
Yeah.
And the reality of this, what the bigger issue is, is when we turn a blind eye to the violence that's happening against women who are in their 50s, 60s and 70s, um, which is typically what the age is here for, for Billings. Um, we get some 30-year-olds, uh, but the illicit massage industry tends to be 55, 30, 55 older. What we see in, in Billings is typically in the 50s into the 70s. Um, when we turn a blind eye to that, when, when men, and this is not male bashing, this is just the truth of what we're seeing. It's just the truth of what we're seeing, exactly. So when, when we make this type of a crime so accessible.
Yeah.
Pretty soon it's not enough sexually.
Gotcha. Yep, yep.
To gain that sexual satisfaction, it, something needs to become more intense.
You gotta keep kicking it up a notch.
Something needs to become more intense.
Yeah.
And what we're seeing in our country is this, again, something we don't want to discuss. What we're seeing in our country is this massive increase of child sexual abuse material.
That's just disturbing, yeah.
And what we're seeing is the intensity of violence against children sexually.
Right.
Because where's that intensity going to go?
Right, yeah.
That intensity needs something greater every time.
Right.
More, uh, yeah, I just don't know any other word other than it needs to become intense.
More violent, more intense, more, more whatever, more reaction.
Exactly.
That's just disturbing on a lot of levels. It makes my stomach hurt just thinking about it. But, um.
You and me both, yeah.
Uh, let's change gears just for a second. Uh, and thank you for what, what you're doing to help, to help with the illicit massage industry in Montana. And, uh, what are, what are, are, are people in Helena listening more now? Are there, are representatives trying to get it before Washington? Or is it still kind of falling flat again this, this, this year or recently? Or?
Well, we didn't bring, we didn't bring a bill to the, um, to the session this year.
Yeah.
I, uh, because we knew, our, our focus was really on, on the ordinance that, that we were working on here in Billings. Uh, but, but I will share with you, the world was watching what we were doing in Billings because after, after we got the first reading passed, uh, um, I started getting phone calls from New York City, from Colorado Springs, from Missoula, from Bozeman, from other communities, even throughout, you know, even outside of, out of our state of Montana.
Sure.
Saying, can you come help us here? Can you, we're needing to address this at the local level also. We've been watching what you're doing. Can you come help us do that here?
Yeah.
And, um, which other communities helped us. And so of course, we're saying, yes, absolutely we can. So, uh, so I have been working with, one, one city in particular is Colorado Springs. Uh, and then have a, um, some work to do in New York City that's, that's coming up as well. But, um, yes, so Missoula.
If it can keep gaining traction nationwide, hopefully, hopefully Washington will eventually have to pay attention and do things for it.
And that's the way it really works, you know? And that's, that's the way I think that, that oftentimes people have a misconception about government because somewhere in the history of our country, um, we became a country that said, our elected officials said, um, elect me and I will work for you. You don't have to pay attention to government. I'll go work for you. Don't worry about it. I'll do the work.
Sure.
What we need to get back to is you elected me, but I'm not going to do the work alone. I want you to be involved in government.
Right.
You tell me what you want, but understand the issues, be involved in your own government. And we need to get back to being a government of, of the people, by the, for people, for the people.
Absolutely.
And, and people need to start becoming more interested in their government and understand. And so to answer your.
On a local level too, not, not just, well, I voted for the president. Well, you know, I mean, let's be honest, your cast for president, you know, it doesn't really impact your life locally, doesn't really impact your life nationally.
Absolutely.
And voting in local politics doesn't seem that important, but that's really where it starts with your local taxes.
It's the most crucial vote.
And works up, works up from there.
Exactly. It's the most crucial vote you have in government.
I agree.
And what, what people need to understand is that the most power they have to change Washington DC is at their local level. It's not the state level.
Right.
The most power they have is right at their local level.
Yeah.
Because it's that local level that, um, that your federal congressional members are really paying attention to.
Sure.
Those, Congress is paying attention to what's happening at that local level. Uh, I wish state legislators were. I think we would have a different, I think we would have a difference in the way our state really, our tax structures were based and everything else, I think would be so much more profitable to everyone if our state officials and elected leaders were actually paying attention to how local governments work. Um, but feds are, the federal governments, they're, they pay very close attention. I do, I work more closely with our federal congressional staff members and congressional members than I do our state legislators.
Yeah. That's interesting. Um, Penny, I do want to talk about one thing that's been a hot topic in the news this week in Billings. And of course, that's the lazy KT finally, finally being demolished. People have talked about it for years. They're like, well, when is somebody going to flatten that place? Uh, obviously a lot of crime there, uh, on eyesore, whatever, a number of different reasons. And, and do you, you generally support that the Billings, and, and in case you missed the news, I understand that four, uh, business owners, uh, property owners in that area kind of pooled their resources to help buy the lot, shut down the hotel. I drove by today, it's already gated up. Uh, demolition looks to be very soon. Do you know a, a tear down date or?
I haven't, I haven't heard a date yet. Uh, but I did know about.
You've known for a while.
Yeah, I've known for, I've known for a while and it's, I've been wanting to shout it from the rooftops.
Have you been a supporter of this building being torn down? And then we can talk about some of the flip sides of what's going to happen. A lot of people are asking, well, yeah, it's just going to push the crime somewhere else. Are they going to move down another block? Or is, is crime going to spread to a different neighborhood or a different hotel? Um, what are the, what are the positives of tearing it down? And what do you see some of the negatives and, and possible solutions for, for places like the lazy KT getting, getting demolished?
Absolutely. Uh, well, first of all, it's unfortunate that it had to come to this point.
Yeah.
I think everyone understands that. Everyone involved understands.
Sure.
It's so unfortunate that it had to come to this, this point. Uh, but, um, you know, like, like you and I were discussing prior, uh, when we turn a blind eye to crime for as long as we do.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be surprised. We have crime in our city. We shouldn't be shocked.
It's not like it happened overnight. And I know, a lot of people, you know, people like, oh, crime's going up in Billings. And it is going up. But if you look at the year-to-year numbers, I mean, I guess last year was kind of anomaly, but you know, it's, it hasn't been an explosive growth of crime. It's happened over years and years.
Yeah.
And I think now it's kind of reaching that point where people are like, gosh, another shooting. We're getting a shooting every day. But it didn't just start happening shootings every day. It slowly has increased over the years.
Right.
And nothing's been done about it.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Um, and, and nothing's been done in regard to, um, a public safety mill levy, um, that actually addresses the funding.
Right.
For our public safety departments. And our public safety departments, it's, that's not just police and our police, some people don't like to hear this, but this is the, the truth of the matter. Our police is underfunded, you know, our police department's underfunded.
They are, absolutely.
It's understaffed.
Yeah.
Uh, um, they've had to rely on grants and, um, uh, the, the kindness of, of different companies that are out there to help us.
Sure.
Fund different things, to help pay for overtime, to help pay for our canine units.
Yeah.
You know, we've really had to rely on, on private companies to help fund some of these public safety uh, tools that we have in our city. So, so one, on, on that end.
Yeah.
We have, we have really shortchanged Billings in regard to investing in our public safety departments.
Yeah.
So that over the years, that has declined in our ability to provide them resources they need.
Sure.
So that's declined. At the same time, we've said, well, we, you know, lazy KT, some of the other establishments that are very similar in the way they run their hotels, um, in our community. Uh, we've cut, we've turned a blind eye to them. We've just kind of said, oh, 300, 400 calls for public service. No big deal.
Right.
That's outrageous.
Well, if you figure whatever the cost per call is, I'm sure it varies, but you know, do the math, it's got to be an astronomical amount of money.
It is. It, it, it's unbelievable. And, and so what, what we've allowed to happen with those businesses, when we have not had, as a city and city, city leadership, when we've not said to those business owners, hey, we're going to hold you accountable for being a good citizen business owner in our great city.
Sure.
We've not held them accountable to that. And they should be held accountable to that. They should be held accountable to the, the type of crime that they allow to prosper on their property. They should be, the business owners should be held accountable to that. Um, and I've been a strong proponent of that for years.
Yeah.
And have really, um, uh, uh, supported and encouraged and pushed and called and become this real thorn in the, you know, thorn in the side to some of these businesses, but also to our city administration and saying, you need to do more. You need to do more. What you're doing is not enough. You're not supporting. Our law enforcement is really what happens when these, when these businesses that allow that type of crime, and it's violent crime.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
This is not just small petty crime that's, that, that's happening and being allowed to happen and the criminals being allowed to be housed right inside, you know, their, their facilities, um, and on their property. These are violent criminals. Make no mistake about that. Um, what happens is we get three, 400 calls. So our public safety are sitting there.
Right.
Meanwhile, someone over in Ward four or Ward five on the west end has had their car stolen or their home broken into, and the police can't get there for two to three hours.
Right. Cause they're dealing with an issue down.
Exactly. Cause they're sitting there for three hours, four hours.
Everybody, it affects everybody.
Everyone suffers. Exactly. The entirety of our community suffers because of a very specific, um, and it's, of course it's not that, you know, not those businesses alone, because we see crime throughout, throughout our community. But they definitely play a very key role in the types of violent crime and the types of drugs we are seeing.
Yeah.
Come and be housed in Billings, Montana.
Yeah.
We are seeing cartels allowed to operate because we allow these establishments to house the cartels right on their premises. What the heck?
What the heck is right?
Yeah.
Um, one, and, and, and it's easy to say, well, lazy KT is going to be gone. They're going to demolish it and the problem solved. Uh, which is just a pretty naive way to think about it. Uh, and one issue you brought up is, um, not everyone, not everyone that, that stayed or, or lived at the lazy KT was a crackhead, a drug dealer, a violent offender. Sometimes there's situations where it might be a woman escaping a violent situation at home. It could be teens on the run. It could be, it could be somebody who's one step away from not having a place to sleep at night. And it's the best they can do while they're trying to get a job and get on their feet or whatever. So.
Absolutely.
Let's talk about those people, you know, where the criminals are going to go is, is one thing, I guess. But let's talk a little bit about what are some solutions that I went down there and counted, there was 26 rooms. And if he's could house two people, where are those 50 people, where are they going to end up? Where are they at right now? The ones that were staying there last week and now, now there's a gate around the place. What do you think's going to happen? And what are, what are some solutions? I mean, affordable housing in Billings is, is a way deeper topic than we have time for today. But what do you, what do you think some immediate answers are to people who say, well, the crime's going to go somewhere else? What, what are you thinking or what are your thoughts or?
Right. So let's start first with, with where the lazy KT is located.
Sure.
So the lazy KT is located in what's called an urban renewal district. Some people call them TIF districts, which is tax increment financing. So let's first of all, understand where the lazy KT is located. So it's located in an urban renewal district. What that means is that within the boundaries of that district, the state of Montana and the municipality, the city government of Billings said that area is blighted and the tax value is decreasing versus increasing.
Sure.
So by state law, um, the city of Billings was able to create a boundary situation for what's called the East Billings Industrial Revitalization District, the E-Bird.
Yep.
And so, which is that very industrial area between downtown Billings and Metro. Over by North Park in that area for people to get a real visual of that. Um, which, which has been crime, you know, there has been a lot of crime in that area. There's been a lot of meth houses in that area. Uh, and, and the tax value of that area, um, was declining. And so when the, the E-Bird was, um, you know, was established.
It was established in the early 2000s or was it something like that?
I was trying to remember what the date was and it's not, not coming to me right off the top of my head. But, um, but each, each urban renewal district is given a timeframe to do their work, to build up the tax value of that entirety of the district. So sometimes a, a district is given, um, 15 years, sometimes 20 years, 25 years, 40 years. Uh, um, so they have just a, uh, you know, a, a real, truthfully, a real small amount of time.
Right. The clock's kind of ticking.
Exactly. The clock is ticking to increase the tax value and get rid of blight and increase the tax value of that district.
Sure.
So some of the ways that they do that are paving the roads, putting in, um, better infrastructure, putting in streetlights, um, for the property owners and the developers that are taking a risk to invest in an urban renewal district. And it is a risk.
Yeah, sure.
Because it's an area that has shown, your tax value is not going to increase on that property.
Not anytime, probably soon. Yeah.
Unless, unless someone who's willing to take a risk comes in and will redevelop property. You know, First Interstate Bank was one of the first, um, Food Bank was another, you know, to come into that urban renewal area. Red, Red Ox, look at the champion they are in the E-Bird. They're, they're just an amazing champion in the E-Bird. Love that business. You know, there's so many other businesses over there, restaurant ranch supply, so many other businesses over there that are really investing in that urban renewal district to help, help one, get rid of the crime. Um, get rid of the, the tagging and the graffiti and all that other stuff. And, um, get rid of the abandoned buildings that are over there, the meth dens that are over there. But, but make it better for the residential and the property owners that live there. So, so now let's set that into the correct place where the lazy KT is. So the lazy KT with the activity that was allowed to prosper.
For years.
For years. Exactly. This was not an overnight thing at the lazy KT. This went on for years. This criminal activity went on for years in this establishment. And we kept seeing the crime, the violence of the crime escalate.
Yep.
So the violence was getting more intense at lazy KT. Lot of gun violence over there.
Yeah.
Um, and that gun violence, what was happening is those bullets were going across the street.
Going everywhere. Yeah.
Exactly.
Businesses and neighborhoods across the street. Yeah.
That's exactly right. Into the surrounding areas. So those property owners and those business owners were seeing their tenants leave.
Sure.
They, their employees were, were wondering, am I going to make it home tonight? Because is a stray bullet going to come and kill me? And these property owners are also having to replace their glass. They're having to replace their walls. They're having to replace everything. They were living in, in, in many aspects, the, the kind of idea of a war zone.
Yeah.
Because of that gun violence.
Tell you real quick, I, uh, had asked, I had, this is a month or two ago. And I asked, I wanted to do, I wanted to go down there and stay, I wanted to go down and stay overnight at the lazy KT because I wanted to meet some of the people that were there. And I asked, I asked, uh, asked my company and they says, we're not going to allow you to do that, Michael. They said, you know.
Take out an insurance policy on you. Yeah.
Insurance policy. And not that I was necessarily afraid of getting shot. I was more kind of worried about, about bedbugs or whatever, but I did want, I did want to see like who's staying here and kind of meet some of the people, not, not to like laugh or make fun, but just to kind of understand what it was like there. And my company said, you're not allowed to do that. We don't, we don't have the resources of a bulletproof vest and things like that.
Yeah. I wouldn't have encouraged that either. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Good for you for wanting to do that. But no, I agree with you. I wouldn't have, I, I agree with them. I wouldn't have encouraged that either. And so, so to kind of, you get back to the point. So where, we have to, we have to understand what the urban renewal district is designed to do.
Yeah.
So the urban renewal district is designed, again, to remove blight and increase tax value. The lazy KT was a blighted place and was taking the tax value of all those other properties down.
Draining it. Yeah.
Absolutely. So one of the responsibilities that is not part of an urban renewal district is, um, is social welfare.
Sure.
That's not the part, that's not the responsibility of an urban renewal district. I would also argue that it is not the responsibility of a lazy KT or the roadway in or the Bourbon Street or Lewis and Clark or Big Five. It's also not those business owners' responsibilities to be sheltered.
Exactly.
It's not.
It's not. Yeah.
And, and they unfairly so, I will say, have been put in that place. Unfairly so. They have been put in that position of being shelters.
Yeah.
Because the way that it works is that different nonprofit organizations within our community that are doing absolutely outstanding work in our community.
Sure.
And, and trying to find shelter for perhaps unsheltered individuals like you described. So these may be women that are leaving extreme domestic violence situations and they've brought their young children with them. Teens that are leaving extreme domestic violence situations or teens that have, um, sadly, we have this right in our community as well, who have come out as LGBTQ and their families have disowned them.
Yeah.
Um, and they're no longer welcome in their homes. So these teens are needing to find a shelter as well. And, um, you know, we don't have large access to shelter in Billings, Montana.
Right.
That's a real misconception. I think the rest of the state thinks that we do.
Well, they do. They just said, well, you guys got a shelter and you got a shelter and you're playing with them for them.
Exactly. So we get all of them that come here.
Yeah.
And we, we don't have enough within our own city to meet our own city's.
Right.
Demand and need.
Yeah.
So the nonprofit organizations that, that do really good work, um, and are working very hard to find shelter and services for these very vulnerable populations. Um, it works on a voucher system where they will provide vouchers to these different hotels.
Yeah.
To house these individuals.
Gotcha.
And so these hotels get reimbursed for these vouchers and they then, you know, house these, house these, house these families and, and individuals and teens. Were these hotels designed to do that? Absolutely not.
No, they're never set up as a shelter. They were set up as a hotel.
That's exactly right. So we have not only turned a blind eye.
Yeah.
To the crime that's happening, but we've also turned a blind eye to the fact that we are putting children and very vulnerable populations into these exact places where some of the most violent criminals.
Yeah.
Are, are being, are also housed, being housed.
Yeah, sure.
Exactly. And we've turned a blind eye to that as well.
Yeah.
And, and so places like the lazy KT really are, um, all encompassing a visual image of what we need to be addressing in our community versus putting Band-Aids over or building Band-Aids. You know, like I say, we just continue to kind of build Band-Aids versus really get to the systemic issue.
Sure.
Of why we have places like lazy KT and, you know, some of the other, some of the others that kind of operate in the same type of business model.
Sure. Yeah. Well, it's a big, it's a big problem. I mean, I, and I, and I don't think there's really a lot of easy answers. Everyone's like, well, where's the money going to come from? Okay. That's, that's one thing. And I'm glad that you mentioned it's not the urban, it's not the, it's not the, the E-Bird's responsibility to provide affordable housing. I mean, whoever, whatever, whoever these four business owners are that bothers a lot, I hope they put a thriving business there of something that I'm interested in. I mean, they don't, you know, it's, it's not fair to say, well, you guys bought it. Now you need to put up affordable housing.
Yeah, it's not fair.
That's unexpected. That's not fair. It doesn't help a businessman or the neighborhood.
Right. Exactly. And it's not their responsibility.
Right.
You know, they're, they are not responsible. They don't have the mission. It's not written in their business statement that, or their mission statement that they provide housing or work with these families.
Sure.
It is in the other nonprofit organizations. It's really their responsibility. And I'm, I'm sure I'm going to get a lot of calls and, and phone calls from that.
You know what?
But, but the reality is that is in their mission statement.
Right.
That is in their business model. That is what they are accepting money for. The responsibility is on them to find that, that housing.
Sure.
And, but we as a community need to support that, need to support their mission statement as well. And understand that we do have very vulnerable people right here in our community.
Yeah.
And we should not say it is acceptable or pat ourselves on the back because we put kids.
Right.
In places like lazy KT.
Yeah.
None of us should think that that was okay.
Yeah.
None of us should say that was okay.
Yeah.
All of us should be appalled that, that we as a community have said, well, we're just not going to talk about it.
It's not, yeah. Don't talk about it.
We're going to say, yeah, we're just going to go ahead and put them in there. Cause now they'll have some walls over their head, you know, and, and a roof over their head and walls on the side. And a door that you hope maybe will lock. Maybe they'll have a screen, you know, on their window. Maybe they'll have a window that's not just jarred open all the time, you know?
Yeah.
Um, that, that's unacceptable.
Yeah.
You know, we've, we can be better than that as a community, but, but it is, it, it is absolutely unfair to criticize the, um, the urban renewal districts or the property owners that really took it upon themselves to address.
Yeah.
The, the business that was consuming massive amounts of, of public safety consumption as well as putting the urban renewal, the urban, the very mission of the urban renewal district in danger.
Yeah.
As well as the property owners all around there, putting themselves and their employees in danger.
It's crazy. Is there any?
So I absolutely support what they, what they've done.
Good. Yeah. Is there any updates or any movement on, I know the, the plan has come up a couple of times over the past and, and, and I'm sure it's probably stalled out, but the plan to make, uh, Third Avenue, Third Avenue a walking path, you know, where the train tracks are down there, right in the middle of that district.
Yeah.
Uh, I know there was different ideas about a trolley that's going to run through downtown or a big walking path, open area. Is, do you have any updates on that? I mean, a little bit different topic, but still the same neighborhood and.
Yeah, exactly. So it's funny you would even say that. So no, I haven't received, city council have, it hasn't received any. Hasn't received many updates on that. Um, still a lot of plans and, and it takes a long time for these things to happen. But, but when I was running for city council, and I really credit Randy Hafer for this, um, he really turned me on to TED Talks for city planning and things like that, um, zoning. Cause I knew nothing about any of that when I ran for city council.
Well, and you hear zoning, you're like boring.
Yeah, exactly. What is that? You know, yeah, exactly. What is that? Um, but I, I got turned on to all of these TED Talks. And so when I was running for city council back in 2017, I would, I, you know, I would have my iPad out and my, my ear, earbuds in and be two o'clock in the morning and I'd be watching all these TED Talks, just completely fascinated with what people could do with paint and what they could do with grass and, and like, oh my gosh. And so one of the first things I did when I talked with Tim Goodrich, you know, at that time, he was the executive director of the E-Bird. Um, I said, oh, I, I want to take all these train tracks and turn them into a, a public park and create a bike path, a lead from the heights into the downtown where it's safe. It'd be so great and everything. And, and I remember him saying to me, that is awesome, except for the fact that we still use these train tracks. Because some of those businesses, um, still do have cars.
There's a few that do use those spurs, don't they?
Exactly. There are a few businesses in there that still use those spurs. So, you know, I, I still think it's such a great concept and I hope that Billings will get to that point. Yeah. You know, so speaking of, of, you know, rail, railways and stuff like that. Hopefully at some time we'll have a future discussion on, um, what I, you know, what I think is such a great opportunity and hope that the county commissioners will eventually get to this idea as well and this, this thought process as well. But bringing, you know, passenger rail service back to Southern Montana.
Don't you hope that happens?
Oh, I do.
I don't know if it ever will.
I'm such a big supporter of it.
It would be fantastic.
Yeah. I'm such a big supporter of it.
A big hurdle that can never happen, but I, I hope it does. I hope at least the discussion continues.
You know, Yellowstone County is just like the lone county right now that, you know, all the, many of the counties surrounding us and throughout the rest of Southern Montana are all, are all getting on board to, you know, the rail authority. And, you know, Yellowstone County seems to be the, the holdout.
Which is funny because Billings was, is here because of train tracks.
Because of the train. Exactly.
If the train didn't come to Billings, it may have never have been this town that it is today.
You know, yeah, we'd still be Colson. We wouldn't be Billings. Yeah.
If any town in the state should support train travel, you think it would be Laurel and, and maybe Billings.
And, and not to mention the fact that, that we're the, the medical regional center and all of the, the rural communities, when they have to get to Billings for, for medical reasons, whatever, they typically have to drive here. We have so many that have written, have said, I wish I could get on a train and, and come take my appointments, especially during the winter time. They do not want to be driving here and I don't blame them.
No. Exactly.
So, uh, yeah. So that's another discussion.
Yeah. We'll save that for another chat. Yeah. Well, cool. I'll let you get running. Uh, Penny, we could talk, I could talk for an hour about Billings and what, and what you're doing and some ideas and stuff, but one group that I don't know if you're involved with very much, uh, the Southside Group that has that new coffee shop. Uh, and I forget their acronym right now. Yep. Yep. Um, I think they're doing a great job of helping with affordable housing in Billings and, um, it'd be cool to see what they're doing on the South Side, maybe, maybe come to some of those. It'd be cool to see what they're doing on the south side, maybe maybe come to some of those spots on the 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 north side area of town.
Yeah.
Get some similar type concepts going with helping people either get on their feet to buy a house or they're building those new apartment buildings now. Which in a decent location on just off Montana's First Avenue South, so. Let's mirror that on First Avenue North and.
Right, absolutely.
You know, if, I I know there's gotta be profit for private business to really jump into it, but if there could be. You know, a somewhat affordable housing and gate and make it a gated community and and it'd be cool to see something like that going to the neighborhood where. The lazy KT is soon to be destroyed.
Yeah, absolutely, I couldn't agree more and. One of the things that people could really support, when they talk about affordable housing. One of the things we need public support on and we need our state legislators to champion. Our workforce housing tax credits.
Yes.
You know, the city of Billings has lobbied and lobbied and lobbied for them. And um thank you to Senator, you know, former Senator Margie McDonald, who has championed workforce housing credits. She's championed low income tax credits, she's carried those bills. Every time she was in session and that's why we have some of the the low income property that we do because of the bills she carried. Um but her workforce housing bills would just get killed off by rural legislators. And and even some of our own Yellowstone County legislators that don't understand. Why we need those workforce housing tax credits so developers. Can afford to build affordable housing. Because just like what you said, developers, they're in it for a business. Be able to make a profit. And the costs of construction. We thought it was high before. It's out. It's just, you know, we might as well be building on the planet Mars. For what the costs are, you know, we might might as well just be sending air, you know, spaceships for what the costs are right now. So we need to be able to give these developers an incentive to build workforce housing and not just, you know, Ironwood Housing.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree.
And we need, we need to do that, but it really starts with our state and our federal. Because the state and and federal, state allows municipalities very few tools. It, that's at the state and the federal level, and so we need the public to really be addressing. The the issues of affordable housing with their state legislators, with their congressional members, because that's where we need those tax credits to come down. And be provided to those developers. So we can have that, you know, but but also along that same line, I too am so glad to see the apartment complexes that that are coming. I'm excited for those, you know, on that south side area, but and I expressed this during city council, one of the concerns I have is. If you, if you really sit around and park your car and watch some of the south side traffic. In regard to, and I'm talking like foot traffic, bicycle traffic. You'll see those that may not have a vehicle, the only grocery. The ability for food purchases that they've got are the Albertson's on North Twenty Seventh and the Albertson's over on Sixth and Central. And you know what they have to do, they have to walk. It absolutely is, and so think about what they're buying. They're walking. And so think about what they're buying, do you think they're buying oranges and grapefruit and bananas and stuff like that, they're not, do you think they're buying big gallons of milk? They're not. Cause they're gonna have to carry that.
Right.
Or the public transportation and then they can't, it doesn't operate on Sundays.
Right.
It only. So so when you think about that and they have no access to a grocery store. To get food for their kids, their families. It's very limited and so you realize. Oh, we're building a lot of housing in an area that has no food source. No public transportation except for limited opportunities. Gosh darn, why aren't these people wanting to build out on the west end by Target and everything else where there are also jobs that are easily walkable to. That pay a little bit more than just service industry jobs, you know, that's a whole other conversation. It's not the jo, I mean, we we hear jobs, 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 but really the discussion needs to be wages, wages.
Exactly agree and and back to affordable housing too, as as it, as it becomes less and less affordable for more and more Montanans. Instead of just, well, you're you're just poor, that's the problem is you're poor, you can't afford a house, well, more and more of us are becoming house poor. Just with the way the market's going, I mean. You know, my salary hasn't gone up thirty percent like housing has this year. I think maybe as more and more, as affordable housing actually impacts more people that are considered considered middle class. I think maybe they'll they'll start talking to their their representatives and legislators.
We just saw a study um just not long ago that that showed that in order to buy a home in Billings, Montana. Your, the average salary needs to be about seventy five thousand dollars or that needs to be. Household income of at seventy five thousand.
Right.
And above. Really, how many of us qualify for that? I can tell you on my city council salary, I don't. But how many of us really qualify for that? And we in Billings, we better be looking at Bozeman right now, cause you have. Houses on Church Street in Bozeman going for a million plus dollars. Detached garage, one bathroom, maybe two bedrooms and it's been there since the eighteen hundreds, you know. But we need to be paying attention to that and yeah, just, you know, we have. Hopefully they'll come, um we annexed some some property, or we didn't annex the property in yet, but we, at this last city council meeting. Maybe it, yeah, maybe it was, yeah, it was Tuesday. So we have the potential of having a Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola manufacturing plant come to Billings, which would be fantastic. Um I'm all for competition and I think it's great. But those are the types of jobs that are going to be higher paying, so. So that was part of what the proposal was that kept coming to us was we're gonna be offering fifty high paying jobs, fifty high paying jobs and I'm like. Okay, excuse me, can you tell me what the salaries will be for those fifty high paying jobs? The the reality was, and I'm all for bringing this manufacturing here, so don't get me wrong, I'm all for it, proponent, wanna see it come. But the reality is that more than half of those jobs are going to be about the twenty dollar, twenty three dollar an hour price range. Which is around like forty seven thousand a year. You know, right around that fifty thousand, still not hitting that seventy five thousand, that's gonna be for the, you know, the upper echelon management that will have those jobs, but. But it's still a start, it's still, now we're seeing that Billings is becoming somewhat attractive. You know, we're really having to compete with Boise and Bismarck, uh Bozeman and Missoula and. We've just gotta start uh attracting more of those types of businesses to come here because if the only thing we're attracting are service industry jobs. We're gonna have an imploding economy.
Yeah.
Quicker than what we want it to be. That's for sure, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, a lot of, a lot of things keep you up at night, that's for sure.
Trust me, they do.
Penny Roney, Councilwoman, Billy, City of Billings, great to have you in today and. But we're gonna wrap it up for today and. You got any fun plans this weekend? Are you going to Strawberry Fest or you gonna make it out to Huntley Homestead today?
I am, I'm hoping that we're not, you know, that this isn't the weather we're gonna be having for Strawberry Fest tomorrow, I hope that, you know, we get this tonight and then hopefully for Strawberry Festival. This, all the smoke will be cleared out and it'll be beautiful day, but I will share with you and to all of those candidates running for city council. Um I will be reading my four hundred and seventy three pages that we have that were provided to us for our city council meeting on Monday. So four hundred and seventy three document, page documents to get through. Exactly, exactly, so I will be, that's typically what my weekends look like, yeah, I was preparing for Monday. But yeah, I'll be at Strawberry Festival tomorrow and looking forward to it.
Well, sounds good, thanks for serving the city Billings and I appreciate you coming in.
Yep, thank you.